Waverly is town, right?
No, it's town.
That's town.
That's town?
They're both, they're both town. The one next to my house.
Yeah, Jefferson and Waverly and they're, they're on the FEMA Simmons thing, they're, they're working on that with Simmons.
I suppose that's also true.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? People were concerned about it, Surphone.
Yeah. And sure, way I mean, it's still got a little bit, you know, it doesn't take much to make more than Surphone being correct. And the sewer being correct. It's neat, not yet. But it's an act of God and it's not like we do bother it or.
It will be going up to grid. Hmm? It will be going up to grid.
Yes, very good. Okay, we got through that. Uh, we filed a delay about the insurance on the backhoe for Craig the backhoe. I called the salesmen from down here. Um, he's supposed to be down Wednesday. I says, if you could give me some ballpark figures, it would help. But his problem being now that they have to have their appraiser come on, look at it, they want their salesman to. So he's gonna be down Wednesday and I'm gonna try to get as, pump as much information out as I can.
And are we going to be, the one we have now, do we own it or do we trade it in for a new one?
Well, we've been on two year rotation.
Okay.
All that, all that work exactly, I can't.
Okay, and do you know about where we stand with our trucks?
Ooh. We.
Pickup is good.
Pickup's no, pickup's good for three years. Truck on the fall with now will be his third year next year. That's due.
Really, that's not the second year really out on the road, isn't it though? But it sat in the shop without the body, so it took so long to get the body on it.
Well, we ended up with a flatbed on to get through the first.
That's, that's right.
And then the first year I plowed the flatbed on, the last year I plowed the box on it.
So this year we're meter your last, this winter we're.
This'll be the third year for that truck.
So then we need a plan for what, next year's budget to get a, to replace that truck?
Yes.
Okay.
So is this year the, the Bobcat?
Well, that's something I gotta discuss down the road too. Um. Now here he is, we, well honestly, we got looking for, for tall sidewalks. The Bobcat is not the perfect answer. Like look around, I don't know if there's any money put in for budget for this year to buy anything. But maybe we'll have money, I don't know what the backhoe's gonna cost, I don't have money to put in for that. If we get a little time here and like clear a few things off, start looking around, I wanna go back to the track machine. And if that track machine, all it does is follow sidewalks. And if it's a used machine, you don't spend a lot of money on it, I mean, you know, I don't wanna buy a piece of junk that I'm working on every five minutes either.
Right.
But go back a four foot wide machine. I don't care if we have a five foot sidewalk, you can back a four foot wide machine. We'll leave the Bobcat around to do what we do in the summer time, 'cause it does move around a lot better up Melon Road on Saturday, you do on tracks, you just burn up tracks. And we can also use the Bobcat to start the snow blowing and widen the locks that way. Because by that time, things are froze up, you're not making grubs, you're not digging them like you're not.
Okay.
If that's something, if you look at here, you know, down the road shortly.
The sidewalk machine wouldn't necessarily be on that rotation, it'd be more of a.
Yes.
It only does sidewalks, there's no need to replace it so often.
Yes.
Well, I know that I have, I don't know if you guys, I'm sure you guys have been talked to by people, I mean, the client's like again, I don't know, or it's just your opinion, but.
It's one of the biggest complaints around.
Biggest complaints are people are so upset about it digging up their lawn and.
Yes.
So, and all the sod that gets put up and all the work that has to be done.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Oh, that brings me to a question for you. I know that sis Kay, uh, for Black Marwell, about whoever plowed it, I don't know. Don't do testings, I don't know if there was testing's done. I don't know, she said that the village plowed it. And there's, was a crap ton of sod that her and her husband had to fit to do it. And was very upset about that. And didn't know if, down the road, if there's something else, if, if we're, if we make the mess, if we're able to.
Well. None of us ever been right about a little bit, but. Do a little bit of work, probably could stay and be built up, so the road's probably better than the sod.
Okay.
Um, maybe some stakes real good at the top, so you get in the center of the driveway to start the year.
Okay.
I'm guessing that's the problem, but.
Okay.
Alright, now, okay. Got the backhoe, okay.
This is okay.
Um, well, we'll pull. The service is leaving. What do you wanna do? Are we fixing it? Are they fixing it?
Is it, is it service instead? Before, before the meter?
It is before the meter, it's after our shut off now.
So then we are not held responsible, correct?
I thought we were held responsible to the meter.
No.
No, that's my question.
I don't know, Rose is saying no.
Past practices, we have, we haven't, we have, we have, I don't.
This is true.
We, it, we, I.
We've, we've waffled on what we've.
You know, the passes come to board and decisions have been made.
I have, I have a note that Jason gave me at one time that says that the village is only. The, the person is responsible from, I think it's the curb box, the resident is responsible from there to the house.
Is that what we did to Jesse? Bradley's.
Nobody was sure where he was frozen.
Jesse, we just thought it was.
That's a different issue.
I'm following his different.
But this whole thing is, you got another case to go.
How far?
Going here.
How far from the shut off for Marv?
Are you familiar with the water pool?
Yep.
Okay, the shut off is. Well, if you stand on top of the shut off, you'll look into truck's sound subscription.
Okay.
This kitchen, the water leak is underneath the.
Higher.
I'm guessing maybe underneath the side, the sidewalk, or this is side of the sidewalk, between the building and the pool. I have no idea if it's a galvanized service, it's copper service, what it is, it'd be plastic or oil, I don't have. I don't know. I've gotta go, I got the USPO in, it should be marked tomorrow, I gotta go get the shut off, 'cause the shut off is broke. So I'll put on, you know, my fire alarm, see if I can turn it off, but I'm in the front of the toilet in the spellbox, and so we can re-shut it off. I can't shut it off right now, it's been running for several days. Yes. So, you know, yeah.
Rose, do you know by chance, or does anybody know, what the proposed water law that the previous water committee was working on and what Cory was glancing over? What did it state in regards to leaks and regards to all of that, like where would the, those be held responsible to?
My, my guess would be that Jason reinforced that whole, the, the resident is responsible from the curb box to the house. Because he reviewed the water law with the committee. So if, if that's what we should have, then my guess is that's how he built the new water law. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you a hundred percent sure. I'd have to read the, I'd have to look it up in the water law.
Okay. What is your guys' opinion on this?
Where's the break again, John, I'm sorry.
Don't let it blow us down.
Okay.
I don't know if it's underneath the cement, underneath the sidewalk, the water's coming out this side, I don't mean nothing, the water valve leak, there's, it'll be leaking ten feet down, for all I know.
I think.
Would that not be their responsibility?
Well, I think it would be. Now. Could we offer them, you know, we'll do the job, you're gonna be responsible for.
Paying?
The payment. You know, it almost has a, you know, same thing as a fair to go, trying to contract with somebody, but it's still on the system that we operate, it's our, you know, intensive purpose, it's our system.
But then if you fix that, then do we have to fix everybody else's and then?
If they paid us to.
But what do we charge them for that? We don't have anything.
There is, there is a rate thing built into the new water law.
There is?
Yes. It's actual cost of parts and then I, I wanna say thirty-five dollars an hour labor, but.
Okay.
Don't quote me.
We, but it's not official though.
No, we haven't, we have to have a hearing on the water law before we do.
This whole, this whole thing is another, it is an official water law, I mean, get that.
We have to get that done?
Official, approved.
So we have to have a public hearing for the water laws, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we might.
Well.
We can't push this, we can't push this off past that.
We, we don't, you know, Cory was, was working his way through it.
I don't wanna fill their pool.
Right. But it's not, we can't, we can't push this particular issue off until we have a public hearing pass our water law and whatever. We, we're kinda.
Well, because I don't think spacing probably too up for that big, the pool didn't make any water.
So then. That's just how we're held liable for it.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the.
We can help fix that, but we.
I'm not, no, I'm saying.
The water law now?
It's proposed, it's not.
We have, yeah, we, well, we have a proposed water law, we have an existing water law.
That's what I'm saying, well, I think we would go off the existing until we propose Noah.
Then what's the existing one state?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
Do you have an opinion on that?
Because I don't refer to it.
Yes, well, your opinion, no, I mean, do you wanna give that by? Oh, find an actual, a case law? No.
Look at the existing water law.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that just makes con, that's common sense, I mean.
I don't have a law yet, I can refer to the old one.
Yes.
Alright, let me tell you how it's worked in the last twenty years.
Yep. We paid it.
Well, when I first started here, if we put a service in, people paid. Now, the village cannot make profit on parts. You may be charged, I think we can charge great for the equipment. You know, and as far as labor, I'm not, but sure, I don't know how that does, but I'll look. Well, then we did, then we did, then we did, then it kind of, you know. Then, I don't know, what do you wanna call it?
Is it all who you know?
Hmm, no, no, I won't say that. I mean, it's been. We've done this person, we've done this person, I mean, we've done, we've always fixed. For a lot of years, we've always fixed services. Whether we charged or we didn't charge, was, you know. I mean, when we go back out and make a repair, we'll later go back and other repair, you know, I mean, if it's all galvanized, I mean, we're, you know. So now we're installed, we can fix this, give the inspection piece of cotton off, we can do the whole thing, it's done. We're talking a lot of copper, now, or old packs, and not taking a lot of time. Or if we put a temporary fix in there and, you know, lock our fingers and bolt it next to the new water law. I don't know.
The board does have a copy of the new water law.
Yeah.
Um, you, you might wanna read through it, um.
Well, I know Dale's gonna be asking. I can get the water, hopefully if they get it marked tomorrow, I can get the water shut off. And I'll tell them if you guys want. A week to figure this out or a couple days.
Well, yeah, I think we, we'll get this straight now as far as what the current law says and go.
We need to go based on the current law or existing policy, but current law controls, if there is something, and if current law is silent, how to fix it. You should follow past policy, but you can't use the new law until it's in.
Correct.
Yeah.
And if that's the law, then I think that's what we should go by.
Yeah, I don't think we should be giving out favors.
I mean, absolutely how.
As a matter of.
That's a new law.
That's a new law, so then we have to add accordingly under what the current law is, so, somebody can find out what that is, if you're able to, Big John.
I am. No, I'll look at what the current law says, I'll do that at the end of the meeting, Rose, it's, I presume the current water law is in books. I'll look at the current water law after the end of the meeting and I will, if it's silent as to whether it's done, then it turns into a policy discussion, and that's not a legal opinion. You have to decide whether you're gonna follow certain policy that you've done in the past or not. But if the water law says that it goes one way or the other, that's the way you're supposed to do it.
So my question is gonna be, is it, does it state anything?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Because it's been, as John said, what we do for this one, we're gonna do for this one, but.
Right, it could really be.
We just knew it. That's what I'm getting at, we didn't do anything.
Well, same as well, no, we've always fixed services. If somebody's had a leak in service, we've always fixed it. Some people, we, we fix them, then we charge, if we put them in service and they're charged, then we put them in service and they haven't charged. And this has been going on for, and it's, I don't know who, why, what the reason, right or wrong.
It's still wrong, I guess.
There's a law, there's a law.
If you're gonna do it, you gotta stick by it and follow it. But what I'm saying is, if it, it's caused a lot of our feelings. When my neighbor put new water service in there, I mean, he got to go up to the town and some allies for new water service, which is actually, if you wanna talk about, all bringing in this copper and that spinning, it's dead cheap. Say you couldn't do it for three hundred dollars. I mean, that was including backhoe labor and everything, people will guess. You mean I gotta pay for the water if you're trying to bring it in my house? What, taking your own glass to the bar?
No, the problem is too, is going with this, then is there something in the water hole that's gonna stay, what are we liable for, we?
Well.
Well, in the new law, it's, it's clear in the new law. Yeah, well, we haven't a doubt. We gotta go by the old law, by mine till we get.
So Jay's gonna look at that and then vines him.
Okay.
Let's see.
What's next? Alright, got the water pool, oh, I did make up some different timesheets to get away from maybe not using the time box. The front and back, the front would be the time and stuff you did for the day.
Oh, wow.
On the ground.
Nice work.
No, we're all good, that's, I just got all, it's fine.
Thank you.
Everybody got one? The only thing I didn't add, here you go. The only thing that's gotta get added is to the back of the trucks. So we can keep our food usage down, we can see what's going on, go check that everything's taken care of, the front side. Any fun day, you know, you start tying, briefly what you did for the day, I'm not asking for, you know, I went over here and I did this, so just briefly what's going on. And same way all the way down through. And we can use these for timesheets, and we can also keep them copied and keep them put away, if there's a question about something that was done or wasn't done, it should be here, you know.
I got, I got a question for you, it's not so much your yours and time sheet, so. Um, the other day I went up and signed vouchers for Rose, and this is before our last event, then the last, these were all done. And I went through, as I was going through them, there was, uh, my parts slipped from Randolph Auto.
Yes.
Um. There was, I know when I used to get them, um, it'd have the vehicle description on their part sheet, that way you'd know what it goes to.
Yes, yes.
Can you see if they can do that for us? Um, and then there was a twenty dollar fee for Steve's for a brake check.
Yeah, I remember that.
And kind of, for a brake check, I can't believe Steve's would charge twenty dollars for a brake check.
I have no pool on that one.
Yeah, I don't.
No pool.
I don't either.
You don't know what's.
I have no idea, I have no knowledge of any of the articles not said made it was a cop car.
Is that just all feasible?
Um, maybe, I don't know.
Um, if you can look on the abstract, it'll tell you what account number it's coming out of, and that'll tell you if it was a DPW or a please.
Um. That's all. I have my highlighter, hold on, I need this, right here. Uh, account number?
Yeah.
Is, uh, five, one, one.
That's the DPW, then Cory, Cory, it's Cory's voucher.
I, I got that?
It would be for one of the trucks, yeah.
I have no idea. No idea. About that one.
Alright.
So I'm not saying.
Like I said, this is still a notice before you, so.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm not just sort of.
How are we gonna.
All our trucks have, no, their own, no, they are their own number, they're usually the month they're bought and the date.
That's what we do over there.
Yeah.
That should be part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
So easy, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I can do that.
Not even trucks.
Well, that way it's easier for us to.
I understand, you know, you know, everything, I, I even give some stuff some numbers, just to, you know, make sure that I can put a number like in the lawnmower and stuff. A lot of the, we get some ZMAs for the lawnmower. Uh, but ninety-nine percent of our parts come from Randolph Auto.
Right.
Then you go to Randolph Auto, you know why I did it then?
Oh, absolutely.
Randolph Auto will go to Mack Truck, they'll go to ZMAs, and they'll go pretty much to James.
And bring it to you.
Pretty quick, it's a five bucks.
We, you can't, you can't do it.
County goes to that. You can't, you can't, I can't send a guy out there, I can't give five bucks.
Oh.
And they will go the zero.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not knocking nobody else, I do vice and oil from Spartan, 'cause the price is better there, you know, but. That's why I pretty much, you know, very much, I'm gonna stay with us. And I think just the way, you know, that for several years now. Okay. I can get that straight, you know.
Thank you.
That, there's my, pulled up the timesheet, whatever there. We touched on the FEMA money, I kinda would like to know what's left over in this budget as far as like buying blacktop. And stuff like that.
Joy tracks expenditures. Um, I want her to double check what she's got with Jean because, um. We, I have some questions, um, on balances in some of the accounts, so I want her to double check with Jean to see if, um, she's got something in the wrong fiscal year or, or whatever, but, um. Some of the accounts are spent.
Okay. Um, well, I guess what we can do, I can do, is I can even see about looking tomorrow, Big John, and see about the budget and see.
I'll make sure he gets a copy of the budget, I, there should be one at the DPW, but, you know, who knows where, so I'll make sure he's got a copy of the, of the existing and the proposed budgets. And I'll also have a copy of the expenditures to date that we have.
Okay.
Um, and I can probably find Jean's last expenditures report that he distributed to the board and get to John.
Okay.
Okay, we gotta get salt ordered by the end of this month. So we gotta know what we're positive for salt. And it's gotta be done through email.
Yes.
Are they still getting it for last year's prices?
I don't know, but it's due, we gotta be, it's, it's gotta be done by the end of this month or they don't get it. Our diesel fuel, I believe we gotta see who's got state bid, 'cause we're still getting through Marco, and they're not got the state bid, and I guess we can do that for a while, after a while, if they don't know. Okay, that's been straightened out. Jimmy's Els House. Alright, I was under the impression it's all straightened out, but evidently it's not. The wires were taken down by the DPW dump truck.
Yeah.
The cable line, we know about this, this is all been set and done. I talked to Jimmy's wife today, she said she could smell sewer on the backyard, I was over there checking that out, and I was talking to her about it, and I says, I will talk before tonight and see. There's some siding that's broke and some boards are broke. Jimmy's a carpenter, Jimmy knows what he's doing. Can we just tell Jimmy to do the job? And hand us a bill, we could pay and say, you know, instead of him going through his homeowners and his homeowners coming back and chasing after us, I don't know if it's legal.
What's the total cost if you had to guess?
Thousand dollars? Maybe?
Because you start hitting hard limits, I think it's about five thousand or above, you have to actually take it to a process. I think below that, the village is allowed more leeway, but that's a question that you can move on to.
Are we talking to Deep Hill as per his paper, is on top material?
I'd have to ask.
Ask, ask.
I would think Jimmy would probably want some.
What for? What was the damage done to the?
It's when the line got cut and it went smashed and then.
Well, what happened is the telephone line, not the telephone line, the telephone line runs over, goes down the side of the house with this dish, this cable. And when it went down, it pulled down the side of the house, the wall siding and broke the board, as it pulled down through that, you know. See everything, that's typical of most cable companies or anybody else in a house. If there's a mileage there, you know, I will feed ours through there too, you know, and it makes a nice job looking down the side of the house or whatever, and that's, I'm taking that's what the damage is.
And who caused the accident again?
Mr. Robins right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll look into it and see how much it's gonna cost, I mean. He always gonna want paid for it, because he's taking time away from making money somewhere else, so.
Well, I, I think Jimmy would prefer it, you know, I mean, I don't think he's gonna say, okay, I want, you know, Jimmy wages, but I don't think he's not gonna do it for nothing.
No, we do that, we got it right up.
I imagine the village has liability insurance for acts of DPW employees. You call them up to see what their deductible is and whether or not that's covered.
I, if this all happened when, when Cory was in charge, and I was under the assumption it was all straightened out.
Uh, you'll wanna call the insurance, whomever is insurance for acts of DPW employees. That's, you said for who was driving the truck, I imagine it was DPW.
Probably our underwriter, right?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay. And you'll ask them whether or not that's covered, and if so, are you going to wanna file a claim under it, because it may impact insurance, and what the deductible is. Because if the deductible's a thousand, if it's gonna be a thousand, there's no sense in filing a claim against insurance.
Did we already have a question on that, do you know?
I thought we did, because I thought the, um, the weight on top of the truck was damaged. I thought that was, I thought that was called insurance.
So if there's already anything related to, for the truck, they can adjust the claim to include some of the damage to the house that was responsible.
Yep.
Can you check, see if the rolling claim turned on or not?
Okay.
Um.
Next now.
I don't know. Thankfully we don't, so.
Do you know about when that took place, John?
Hmm?
Do you know about when the accident took place?
Is that March?
Yeah, I believe so, right after, the weather straightened up there a little bit, and ended water leak coming into the old school. I don't know, I'm never.
Been a couple months since that happened, so.
We'll get it straightened out.
Okay. Just a few other good things. I noticed the barn on Sals, on, on Scott Street, it's a large owner up and. Starting to fall in, I almost, somebody wants to follow up on that, check it out, it's up there, it's a little, it's fallen into the street.
Mr. Brecker?
What's that?
Um.
There's a barn on what street?
South Street.
There's a barn on Scott Street that has a hole in the roof and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you get details of Mr. Brecker, so he knows where to look at that?
Yep.
We got south and then you got, we got.
There's a property maintenance issue. This is so.
Okay. Wonderful.
Okay, the burner on some of that more. Every time I turn around, once something gonna happen, once something gonna happen, does anybody have an answer on that?
Um, what I heard is that, I thought that the county was, the county was getting it taken care of, I thought. From what I heard, that they finally got the money and that they were gonna start doing the dam along it, if I'm not mistaken, but. Can we find out, can we contact the county in regards to that? Um, I know the residents on Love and Worth are upset that that house is still there and it's such a huge eyesore.
Yeah, well, there's been several people that have been looking at.
Okay.
Then we had a water leak Friday night, Friday afternoon over in Melville, the orange line coming from the Henni Hills Bridge track. And I have taken that, did you hear any calls under your water?
Nope. Uh, Friday?
Several people.
On Friday, I, I don't know, 'cause I wasn't there.
Okay, well, Friday was a problem, um, Saturday I seen a lady down to Dallas General, and she said she had dirty water, it's a electric faucet wrong. And I explained to her what happened, then Cindy Gwen's had a little problem with water hammer, and I don't know exactly what that's all about. But Mark's also been, Richard's been saying, there's been several more, he gets up to, um, brush his teeth with our first thing morning, and he's got air in his faucet in his house. It's been kind of an ongoing thing, well, we had the leak in the, in the fresh reducer, and I thought maybe they'd take care of it. Well, hopefully we got a little air bubble after Friday's episode, because there couldn't be water coming back, the village, we had to, to leak through some stuff, but we are flushing to seventeen, and it's been in the paper, right, Rose?
I'm sorry, the water flushing is, yeah, it's been in the paper and it's posted.
Well, hopefully we can buy it till seventeen, and maybe if we got an air pocket floating on it, we can get it drawn out of there.
It's cold, yeah. That vac truck, you said you were gonna talk to Ollie and, right?
I wanna talk to City Ollie and, and see what their timeframe is, Dr. Wanda, if I can get it in here, or you get something down up there, so they go around, so it's gonna go on to that.
That'll help us, I think, a lot of voices around the village.
Well, my main concern right now is this tube that runs underneath the old existing blue flush line, I believe that's. Seems to be, hopefully they drive up some basements. Um, here sometime, it's pretty good to stretch out what part of the hole we have and see what's going, I wanna hook into the old black hydrant and watch the business section.
Okay.
Um. The only downfall of that is it may have to have some help. Because coming down the street here is fine, 'cause you can hit the line on one side of the road, but when you gotta cross. Because coming down the street here is fine, because you can hit the line on one side of the road, but when you gotta cross over and watch down Washington Street. You gotta stretch the fire hose across the road. You might need to level some traffic control.
When do you wanna do this?
It'll probably be very early in the morning.
Um, I wonder, you're talking right here at three fifty-three.
Yeah.
I wonder if we gotta hold the state from kinda longer, if they could, because that's their road, if they could maybe send a couple hours up to point of traffic.
Because usually when the done, when the years pass, usually we're up here moving by three, morning. Less traffic.
Are you thinking of this during the week or at the weekend?
I would probably try to do it, well, depending on who's scheduled what, but. Do it in the, you know, on a leak one. Because washing these bricks, you don't stand right there and pour it right through, you just kinda move water down. But it would be nice to get down these sidewalks and front of these, maybe some of the stuff will come rolling out and be all the look.
Well, and if, if we can go down that avenue with trying to contact the state or county, whatever, otherwise.
If we get rolling by three, three thirty, we should be down around the corner by five, five thirty. Yeah, we probably better to do it on a Saturday. You're gonna get a school bus, because the school bus is running the brick by six.
I put it to you this way, we, we can go that route and they're going to do work with this, whatever, cool. Um, my guess is, if I had, if we did it on the weekend or overtime and all that stuff. So long as there's not any legality issues or insurance or whatever, I'm up at that time of morning quite often.
Basically, you're, you're fine, because what you do is you take, I guess, as much holes I got. You lay from the hydrant down the hill and you bring it back up, so you got a nice loop, and when you do this, you can pretty much stay on one side of the road and traffic can go around it, as you call it, it's when you stretch across. Going in the other way, and usually what we've done is if there's cars coming, we've opened up our holes wide open and just let, you know, flow it till the cars go over, but, you know, just don't let them hit it seven miles an hour.
Do you know, have, um, would you be able to get, how, anybody has, maybe Jason, you can, um, to see about contacting the state about striping uptown here? Because that, since it's their road, they have to stripe it, and then we're able to maintain it, is from my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to contact them, because I know a lot of residents.
Parking space?
Yes. I know a lot of residents, that's a big complaint, is that there's no striping, and that needs to be done. And so after big, after our DPW washes the roads, I mean, how long would it really take them to go ahead and just do the striping at some point in time?
We'll do, we gotta do washing the street ourselves.
Right.
Um, probably have to call down the neighbors and the two down south, I think trying out, uh.
Are you able to do that?
You said question regarding legalels?
I just throwing that out there, I don't know, you know.
What, here?
Best practice, when you have people working on a road, you do, you flag people and you talk to your insurance carrier about why they do that, if there's a reason for it.
No, no, he's talking, he's talking himself, volunteering to go out there.
Oh, I see. Um, you may or may not be covered under the workers' comp, uh, so if you get injured, and if you're not covered, then.
I actually spoke with, with Hannah, our representative for Gray Insurance today. As far as their agency is concerned, she didn't see an issue with it, she, she sent it to the underwriter. Who she will get back from tomorrow. We had, we had some other things kinda in, in, that had come up in discussions, and I knew I was curious if I was gonna bring it up tonight. Uh, she doesn't manage to enter, if anything to say about it. If they don't, it's, the, the workers' comp should cover it, which she told me, and that's through the county.
Yeah, just in case you get hurt later there. Make sure that whatever the underwriter says to you, if they call you up on the phone, you can't inform, if that is an accident, they can back away from it.
Got it.
Now, that being said, if they say it's not covered and you still wanna do it, uh, maybe the village should ask you to sign something, if you get hurt, that you're not going to sue the village.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, you know, between you and the village personally.
Got it.
Okay.
Flags.
Yeah, did you, did they, did Cory order them, or did anybody order them, from when we discussed the last meeting?
We talked about additional flags.
So that we have every other pole had a flag on it, and then hopefully next year we can have every pole.
Where, where are we talking about these poles? Are we talking down South Street or?
Washington and South, I believe, is what historically has been flagged for the parade.
Little bit. Just stay out of Washington. More than flags in the bracket here, you know.
Yeah.
We gotta look at the cost of this.
Cory identified, I, I told him we usually buy our flags from, I think it's the Legion in Little Valley.
Yeah.
He said he had a place that he usually got from, but I did, I haven't heard anything since.
Well. It's not horrible, but long term, I mean. We, uh, we worked a long pretty good with Chester Johnson, when they had those wells.
Yeah.
You know, if they need a little something, they need the driveway so they need a small push bag. They need this or that, they're pretty good about getting steel to us. With minimal cost, unless it's a project that's, you know, above the, beyond the government things.
Okay.
And we built all the stainless steel lifts for them, spring boxes, two years ago? Year ago. Last two. Two years ago. I don't think he hit Jason a whole hell block, or it was, it was deep, it was from the.
Okay.
Um.
Do you know roughly about how many flags we have?
Hmm, no.
I guess somewhere.
I know we do have small poles down South Street, and we do. The one by the bank's got a hanger, the one down by the snake revival shop's got one. Then you go down the corner, there's one, there's one on the film, and there's one on the corner of. So then flags and there's flags that tail away, that they're hanging on poles all the way down the.
Yeah. I'd say grand total number of flags that we hang is probably twenty-something.
Yes, and we usually go in more, more than important. Different difference, and I guess.
Okay.
Just stick flags in there.
So if anything, then we need to start at least a process of each year that we're contributing an appropriate. And a certain amount of money going towards, or allotting a certain amount of money towards flags. See more flags, is what.
Well, we, I, I would like that.
I mean, can you figure out how much? Let's hope that we're gonna be able to have South Street done really nice for the flags for Memorial.
It does look nice, already.
Your celebration money is already taken up with fireworks. Fireworks cleans it out, because it's five hundred in celebrations. Five hundred goes to, toward the fireworks.
Fireworks.
So it would come out of the DPW budget.
That was not a good look. Not a good look.
Well, I believe that. It's like everything else. We set the flags up down through there, and I can't remember what, how it was, every other pole, every third pole. Then also it looks kinda even to you, good for cemetery. I mean, it doesn't, it looks nice. Biggest problem we have is, you know. And they're supposed to be the ones that. You know.
Would you be able to see if, um, like, so if it's right now, it's every third pole, can we get it down to at least every second pole? For this year? So that would be what, maybe five?
It wouldn't be a whole heck of a lot.
If you do that, are we able to take that out of the general fund, or is that after the DPW?
Uh, DPW's in general, so it would come out of probably his fifty-one ten, is my guess, I mean, he's.
It should be classified as.
DPW decides that, so, um.
It should be classified as celebrations, are we not able to classify this, even though that's what it is, or?
Yeah, money's already.
So are we able to transfer funds for that, say, two hundred bucks?
You can, you can ask, yeah, you can ask Jean about transferring it out of contingent, or if there's somewhere else. Right, I don't know of anywhere else besides contingent that you can transfer money out of for an over expenditure.
Can I ask a question about that, though? And like I said, you know, being on the library committee. How much is this gonna cost? And then when do the other committees start saying, well, why can't we have a little more money for this or that?
Every year, we have several places that ask for more money every year.
Yeah, oh, I'm saying, what are we based on? I knew, I said, I don't know.
Library got what, additional two hundred bucks?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, so.
Maybe, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
I believe they were getting forty-five hundred, now it's forty-seven, if I'm not mistaken.
The library is there all year long, and how many times, how long are we always flagging?
I'm a veteran, you know, I'm all about the flag, but what I'm just getting at is, you know, it's maybe it's, I don't know. Well, so we've had, the ones that we put up here, they're on stainless steel brackets, and they hang this way.
Yeah, I've seen them, yeah.
Okay, the ones on South Street, rather flags are hanging off. One time and three, let's set them up so we can all through one hundred and pick up. Get them back done. You know, so they're not the last one. Well, if people can reach them.
Sure is good.
See if they're gonna be probed, or they're gonna be gone, so we put them up so we can. I believe we can do it out of the back of the truck, but if the towns come in, we usually set it up so town comes up with the summer banners up there on the crew, get these done, and then they're down South Street, boom, 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 they got the fast gun. You know, even.
I'm glad we're done.
I mean, are we able to have them up for a couple of months, I mean?
They usually are.
For the summer?
They usually are, they usually put up, I, I actually saw it in the minutes when we were doing one of our searches today. That they usually go up right before Memorial Day, and then they're up pretty much most of the summer.
Usually right after Labor Day.
Labor Day?
Yeah.
Sounds right to me.
Mayor?
Yes.
Does Colton Ford have a contingency fund?
You have a contractual fund for expenses.
No, the year is half over with, and I'm very frugal with money. If I could donate some of that for flags, could that, can we do that?
I don't, I don't know what, what the rule would be on the village accepting donations, it doesn't happen very often. Um, I mean, that would be something to check into with our treasurer.
Or not a donation, a transfer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Village, the village is trans HEDIC, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fiscal year is over the end of the month. So.
Okay, so then if there's appropriate timing, if anything, just for flags, if we can appropriate, I mean, what flags, what, two hundred five bucks probably from the Legion? Twenty-five, does it sound all right?
I'm guessing, if we gotta buy the ones on the poles to put on South Street, that'd be looking a good sixty-five, seventy bucks a piece. You got, and the sad part of it is, you gotta buy good quality flags, you don't buy your, your Walmart flag, there'll be junk in.
Oh, absolutely agree.
That's the sad part about it, that's where you have, do you put it down low enough so they're handy to access, take them up and down? Take a chance somebody's still on breaking one, or you put them up in there so they're, you know. Last, and we gotta get some last, you know, some one decent.
So we take a couple of years to build up our stock until we're full.
Exactly, so.
So. I mean, even at seventy-five dollars each, that's under five hundred, I mean, it's what, three seventy-five, four hundred dollars?
Was there a place in Ollia we used to go get them?
I think we have ordered from a place in Ollia, um, I couldn't tell you the name off the top of my head. I get calls all year long about flag and banner sales, and don't we wanna buy something, and I remind them about the tax cap and the tax freeze, and they apologize and say goodbye.
Some of our banners have stayed to be updated too.
Oh, yeah, our banners are getting sad.
We did a little go out and weed out the bad, bad ones, you know, the years or.
Alright, so can we at least come to a consensus on?
I'll check into it.
If you could, okay. All right, so before Memorial Day, for the parade, we actually have.
Day of the parade, yeah.
Marty, do you have anything else, Big John?
Um, have you gone through the historical center yet?
No, we just move it around, you know.
Okay.
But maybe end of this week, you.
Yeah, so probably a very good idea, if, you know, I would take, we lease somebody, a couple people, you know, to see if that. Quite interesting, you go through.
I'll be down for that.
And, um, you'll see what kind of condition our building is in. Not the greatest, but we do have some interest, so that's.
I know, this Colin was here earlier, and I know he had a huge report to give us, but. We haven't gotten to him yet.
The Historical Society is really starting to gear up and.
Yes, it is. It's really starting.
I know there's been some wire business that hasn't been taken care of, I think they said maybe four or five years. And I didn't know if, you know, we own the buil, we own the building, right, Ross?
That's my understanding, we own the building, we pay the utilities.
So. I don't know what this stuff is, it's a federal thing, I don't know what it's all about, maybe it's something the village later to take care of. You know. I don't know what involves, probably, probably, you probably could explain what you want.
Okay. Can you do that, can you contact?
Uh, the civic way, I think it's gonna paint the steps, Mark is donating the paint. Mark did ask me if they cut the, the mesh off the stairs. And clean about, you know, do pre pickup loads of crap out of there, if I can back up, tack it back in, I said, you know, maybe wanna give it out, or whatever. Or I'll come and cut it, whatever you need there, they, they need to donate the paint. And it is, there's some severages that have to be addressed, the window over top, the door, if you look, bump this far from being in. Kinda like settle down.
Yeah. Okay.
And I got a note on the senior center.
Yep.
On the faucets and the ceiling tiles, you know, the craters over top, the lights. Mark's gonna look into the faucets, I got a key today, so if he wants to go down, running warm late at night, he can go get in, do what he's gotta do to get the faucets fixed. As far as the channel though, and lights. My ass depending, it should be going down and started over and straight, because the, the light panels do not fit without cutting, and if you guys are looking, try to cut one of them light panels and make it fit, usually you get, just about worry about it, it breaks in the middle.
The senior center's been tabled for.
Yeah, senior centers.
For long.
Well, yeah, well, I think it was three or four years ago, Jason had Mark, Richard go down and give an overall view of the building. And between that and Pat's building, that little enough alleyway, there's nothing left of that wall. There, I mean, there's not enough there to make it, you know, it's, how far, how much more do you wanna spend before you're gonna be into big money? You know, but.
There is a reserve for that building, I'm not sure what the balance is at this point, Jean would be able to give me that.
Okay. Look into that. Maybe just that one building.
No.
Well, or a different location, maybe, because that one's just. It's very, it's horse. Alright, so Big John, you went over sidewalks, you chair Bradley fixed, summer help we hired, roads we discussed, sidewalks with Kurt. Uh, BACO, the insurance appraisal, trees, you listed four trees thus far. You're gonna contact the state in regards to striping uptown. Um, while the pool leak, um, we'll get in contact with you tomorrow. Uh, Jay is going to look at the current law and that to follow. Uh, he passed out new time sheets that you and Toby are going to be adhering to, I assume, right?
That's, I don't know, I, I can't remember, that was up for a little discussion, I mean, presented them to us. But we've been using time card right along.
Yeah, we've been using time cards, but this, this would give us a little more.
Yeah, well, and.
And basically what, basically what I'm saying is, you trust the guy working for you, if he says he's right at seven thirty, he's right at seven thirty.
So I figure once we, Big John's on this report, we'll address the other elephant in the room, maybe?
Yeah.
If that falls under this, and I've got some issues with it, so.
Alright. Uh, salt needs to be ordered by end of month, which you're going to take care of, I assume, correct?
Exactly.
Salt needs to be ordered by the end of the month, which you're going to take care of.
As soon as I know how much I'm allowed to order.
Okay, uh, then Jimmy Muzell clean, we're gonna look into that as well, and then washing the roads uptown. What do you wanna do that plan about?
I'd probably say sometime next week, I gotta see what holes I got, what kinda shape it's in. They might be the disperation, or if they get done or not, it's been a long time, it's been all.
And then also the back truck, you're contacting with only in Guanda?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Been a busy man, bro.
And this is all in one day?
So it's pretty much days, and I rather like to use the silver pumps and, um. Something else.
Well, I know we think you're.
Build the house?
Build the house, yeah.
Picked up the garbage.
No, I picked the garbage.
Oh, and are you still gonna be able to put out a cigarette butt, uh?
Uh, we used to have one out front, and then it turned into someone's diaper. Payoff garbage can, yeah. Um.
I will go to the bag shop, and I will stab you off one, okay?
Thank you.
I was thinking we had one.
You use the mailbox on the door?
I was thinking we had a square one that was like. Sand covered or pebble covered, and it had an ashtray in the top.
Yeah, that's the, the, the garbage can with the ashtray in the top, which we know what the garbage can turns into.
Exactly.
It turns into a magnet infested. Pool.
Pretty gross.
Yeah, but I will come up with some.
So you're talking about just a ashtray kind of thing?
Right, so if anybody comes uptown or anything, especially after they're gonna clean and everything, I wanna see people just throwing cigarette butts on the road or anything like that.
By Jenny Lee and the library, and that's another big hotspot.
Yeah.
For all the small rivers. You want change some water for cigarettes in, you just wanna.
John, is it possible to do two, one for each side of the road, because there's a hotspot over there for cigarette butts?
Yeah. Wonderful.
Yeah, I.
That will help tremendously. We've had complaints about butts over there needing to.
Big, big planters for sand in it, that's what she was saying.
Yeah, oh, oh, little thing.
Really?
Yeah. I'd want forever.
I know you can.
Uh, our planters for the flowers, not so good. Not very good shape at all. I think we need ten, okay, no, coat the, the water. I can't remember if they're old whiskey barrels or not, if they're getting kind of grody rotten, not too easy to use.
That's what I, I thought they were, that kind of thing.
But, you know, some of them aren't a pot, it's probably just a, it's simple.
Orange what?
The orange pots, you know.
Oh.
Or do you have anything else or?
I don't know if Civic League provides those or we do.
Flinders. And even flinders, those are not good.
I don't know if that's Civic League or us.
I'll count and let you know in the round.
Okay.
What's that?
I don't know if that's Civic League or us. Civic League does the flowers, I don't know who provides the planters.
We always take girls.
We did those, okay.
So make sure that whatever you have, we're balanced for this year. I mean, you can, you can always wait till June, we're only gonna be there right now.
They have to get their flowers planted from the money.
Oh, then yes, get that done, yeah.
You, you'll find out, and they do some civic league.
Okay. All right, all right, well, you've done an amazing job being deputy superintendent, appreciate your hard work very, very much. Anybody else have anything to add?
Good, cause I'm on the bench now.
Okay.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy John.
Yeah, they call me.
All right, uh, moving on, let's go to, uh.
Wouldn't, uh, the future of the DPW be under this?
Um, that will go under correspondence.
Okay.
When we address that.
Okay, I thought it would be under the committees for this, we were talking about where the future of that lies and is that.
I, well, but before we can discuss that, really, we need to get down on the process.
Well, I mean, I guess we're gonna follow protocol. Space and Corbin was at the end of the list, so.
No.
That's.
Well, that's where I wanna go with and get Mr. Rucker out of here and then we can rehash that because Mr. Rucker's right here. It's like almost three hours now and he's still here, so.
Okay.
Uh, allow him to be able to report that he can go about his, rest of his evening.
All right.
So you're up, sir.
Okay, uh, this is my first board meeting since paper plan. I wanna thank the mayor for the appointment. I've met Don Wirth, so far, haven't met anybody else. I thank you for the chance of me to visit him. Uh, I'm getting my feet wet and a couple of cases of, you know, learning. Rose gave me the, the village ordinance, I'm learning the ordinance. Uh, I'm only a phone call away, so don't be afraid to call me if you've got an issue. Rose, that, um, that bar roof that we just discussed, if you would, put the address of that in my mailbox tomorrow?
Also, just, um, something with regard to me personally, a couple of weeks ago, if you, if you make it know for you or whichever. There've been a couple of cases in recent years, we're down just below us here at the corner of the bank is, um, there've been some slips and falls and like, you know, things like that. It was an idea somebody brought up to have a railing there. Now, I don't know exactly how that'll work, especially now that we're talking here on Exo State Highway. Got, you know, most workable thought to me says that the bank would be agreeable to putting a railing on their building, even around the corner. Just something for you, if you look into that.
That would be.
It's what I'm, well, there is no zone over there, other than having the fuses to shovel.
Shoveling. Yeah, the fuse and shovel, the business.
Our machine does not fit because of the line posts.
Wow.
But that's just, I, voices that I would ex, I would have explored if you would, if you would.
Yeah, it sounds like a safety issue, maybe I can. The drugstore has an issue with their steps on the side of the building. Uh, they, it's concrete, but it's, um, deteriorating. They wanted to know if they can put, uh, wood, replace it with wood. Uh, the village owns a sidewalk, they're, they're worried about encroaching on the sidewalk. I don't think it would be with just an inch and a half. Treated lumber, they put on their first facade, they want to put a nice fancy railing up there, wooden railing, posts. Uh, I don't think you can plow that corner because there's a light post in the land, so it would be interfering with plowing.
Not to my knowledge.
Uh, I feel as though I should give the building from that, this one, or that, that's the board.
I see no issue.
All right, no.
I don't see an issue. Their, their insurance company doesn't want to, um, insure that because of the state.
And that's the reason they don't want to do this.
Okay. Anything else?
No, uh, like I said, I'm only a phone call away and.
We do have that, uh, that our ambulance, uh, building down here is looking at, they made a flight pole with a brick monument around it. And they just wanted to know if they needed a building permit or anything for that.
I'll check in the regulations to see if the.
I looked, I didn't see that one, I'm more familiar than I am, so if you could.
Yeah, yeah, I can. Who's in charge of that?
Of the ambulance? I am.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. As far as the correspondence.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a file here with a survey and everything I'll look it up and see if, do you know exactly where you wanna place that flight pole?
They said they wanted to put it over, uh, it'd be on the, uh, other side of the building, towards, um.
From the grass park?
If you're looking at it, be on the.
Yeah, be, yeah, if you're looking at the building, it's on the left hand side, um, you got a dirt section between the, the sidewalk and the blacktop parking lot.
Uh-huh.
You get, it's more towards the sidewalk that's still there, towards the back of the lot. They wanna put it in that, in that area there.
How high do they wanna come with?
That I don't know because they're selling bricks, so as many bricks as they sell, we're more, so that I could.
As long as it's not over three feet, so it obstructs the vision of, you know.
No, it's, no, it's back for, I don't think it's gonna obstruct anything.
You'll just need to meet with the individual at the ambulance, correct?
Yeah.
Maybe we should discuss that with them?
Captain Brad would be the best.
Yeah, Ken Charles would be the one that heads the ambulance line.
So I would advise that, for tend to contact Gary and they can correlate whatever.
Is it Thursday? I, I think it's their meeting.
It, it's a Thursday, I'm just not sure which Thursday.
I think it's this Thursday, I forget my, I'm there. I can maybe find out more and let, uh, her know where to get hold of you or I can.
Um, they must have a survey of that lot.
I've gotta assume, they just, they just renovated that building on the.
I know, I know. Uh, have, give me a copy of the survey and pinpoint on the, on the grounds where they want it to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Before you let Gary go, actually, one of the two things that I was gonna cover is right near his wheelhouse. Uh, when I was at the conference, the annual conference out in Sarasota Springs, NYSERDA, New York State Energy, it's research and development agency. They have an incentive program for the village, potentially you get some money. Uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, I think, is what's currently available and you have to go through the CFA to get it and stuff like that, don't wanna deal with details. If the village is willing to adopt a unified solar permit for new solar construction below a certain size, if it fits certain dimensions and if it's only so far from a roof, it only goes on rooftops with a certain angle. And there are various safety requirements that are listed in it. If the village adopts this before September one, the village should be at twenty-five hundred bucks. And I've got more details for it for the village. And I will be doing the research and let it figure out how the village passes the law appropriately or resolution. But one of the things I heard from the person who gave the program is that it might just be that the code enforcement says, okay, yeah, they adopted it, now write on the thing, we adopted this form. Or it might be more than that, but if you wanted to give any of your thoughts on whether or not, nobody's gonna be putting in solar panels today anymore. This is a ten to fifteen year thing. And they wanna try and get all fifteen hundred and fifty different municipalities in the state that have permitting to get a similar application so that it's easier for developers to put in solar. That's why there's the incentive for twenty-five hundred bucks. And all you have to do is say, here, this is our permit, you just have to use this. But it would be something that Gary would have to deal with, so I didn't wanna wait for you to leave the room and say, ha ha, now you have to deal with a new permit.
We do make people get, uh, building permits for solar because it's electrical.
Absolutely.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah.
And weight on roofs is another issue. Uh, we, uh, whenever anybody files for a solar, for solar panels on a roof, we ask for, I don't know, the tax plan to see if roof is gonna support. Because they're having.
If you're willing to, all of those things are in this current one, though, if we're in a discussed form or modification, if we're willing to adopt a unified one, so it looks the same for developers throughout the state, that's how we get the money. And so I don't know if you, I can give you this copy and I'll have to find another one, but my family have a color if you want to see it. And you can give a recommendation of, or if you think there's going to be any problem with it at some point in the future.
If it's close to what you, what you've got now.
And if it's close enough, I'll look into the legalities for what we have to change on our side from municipal law to adopt that. And then maybe go get some money. And I'll make sure that paperwork is necessary and figure out if we get money to stay in parallel, we sent a few emails out for that, but.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, it sounds like a catch.
Yeah, I mean, it worked.
Flag.
I mean, it worked though.
The flags, they're.